Well, hello. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners meeting. I want to welcome those joining us online, those joining us on Facebook and YouTube, and all of you that are joining us here in person. When you walked in the door today, we'd love to remind you that you could have picked up a meeting agenda packet. We encourage you to follow along, all the agenda items that we're working through today. And if you're curious, you could always access all the supporting documents that we look at when we're making decisions on each of these items. You can find those at sedgwickcounty.org. One note of business before we start. Commissioner Meitzner is joining us virtual today. He is representing the county at the airshow in Paris. So I look forward to all the work that's being done there. And I'll hold the details that I know about what this event is going to be and what was expected from that event until he gets back to brief us next week. But it'll be a great briefing. It's a big show, probably the biggest that we've had in our representation from Kansas in the history of that airshow. So Commissioner Meitzner is there, joining us virtually. And with that being said, why don't we go ahead and get started? I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order for June the 11th, 2025. Madam Clerk, first item.
Evocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the fog salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item.
County announcements.
Good morning, Nicole.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Nicole Gibbs of Strategic Communications. As of this morning, Sedgwick County Public Works has installed several safety features to the intersection at 167th Street West and 21st Street North. Crews converted the two-way stop to a four-way stop and added other traffic controls, including white stop bars on the asphalt next to the stop signs, central traffic signal flashing red in all directions, and ground-in rumble strips on 21st Street to warn drivers from the east or west of the impending stop. These improvements are the latest in an ongoing effort by Sedgwick County to address safety concerns at this intersection through targeted traffic control measures. Boating season is here, but before you head out, Fire District One has a few tips that they would like to share with residents to keep safe and the fun afloat.
Boating season is here, but safety begins on land. Sedgwick County Fire District Number One recommends regular maintenance and inspection of your boat before hitting the water, since fuel leaks and other mechanical problems can be dangerous. Make sure you have a fire extinguisher onboard, plus one life vest for every passenger and a flotation device you can throw to someone in the water. It's not just a bad idea, it's the law. Also, keep a whistle or an air horn on the boat in case you need to get someone's attention for help. Once on the water, stay alert. As captain of the boat, it's your job to know where your passengers and other boats are at all times. Paying attention can prevent most accidents. Scan the water around you for logs, tree stumps, or other hazards. If your boat is towing someone on a tube, surfboard, or skis, have a spotter watch and hold an orange flag high in the air when someone falls into the water. This warns other boaters to stay clear. Drink plenty of water and avoid alcohol to stay hydrated and alert. Operating the boat while intoxicated is a federal offense. For more safety tips, visit the Sedgwick County Fire District One website.
That's good.
And last but not least, Sedgwick County offices will be closed on Thursday, June 19th, and observance of Juneteenth. As always, emergency services are available by calling or texting 911. And that's all I have for today.
Okay, great. Appreciate that announcement from Chief Hensley and the Fire Department. Commissioners, any questions or comments on the county announcements? Seeing none, Nicole, thanks as usual.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Public agenda.
Okay, no one had signed up for public agenda today, so we'll keep moving. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item A, resolution appointing Christopher Steiner to the Sedgwick County Park Township clerk position.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Justin Wyatt, our county councillor, and if it's okay with you, propose to take up items A and B together. They both involve the appointments to the same township. I did want to give a brief bit of background because this is somewhat atypical. Under state law, if somebody lives in a third-class city of the third class, they're an elector for the township as well. However, that's not the case for second-class cities. Mays recently became a city of the second class, and two of the people on Park Township, two of the township officials, lived within the city of Mays, meaning they could no longer remain as township officials there once Mays became a second-class city. So as a result, items A and B both involve appointments to fill those vacancies. Madam Clerk read item A. Item B would appoint Tyler Arnett as the township treasurer for Park Township. These are both recommended by Chairman Beatty as Park Township's district four. Recommended action is to adopt those resolutions.
Okay. Justin, I appreciate that. Just a couple of quick notes here. We had, I think, three people total that expressed some interest in this, so I appreciate the help from the councillor's office and the clerk's office in helping to process these. I've talked to both individuals. They're both excited to get in and work. I live in Park Township and served by Park Township on my road. I want to thank those that this wasn't a resignation, this was they were forced to be removed from the board just simply because of the statute that you referenced. So one individual, Kenny Nicholson, in particular, was always really good as he worked my roads, especially with my kids. So I appreciate the service, long service that he had in Park Township and all the work that those two individuals did. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion to appoint Christopher Steiner and Tyler Arnett to the Park Township Board.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. And neither of those individuals are here, so County Clerk's office will be reaching out to schedule paperwork signing in the office. Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
New business. Item C, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on June 5th, 2025.
Hey, good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's the third time I pinch myself because I've never been this early before. Wonderful feeling. Joe Thomas, the purchasing director, and I'm here to present to you the regular meeting of the Boards of Bids and Contracts of June 5th. There are six items. Our first item is laboratory services for various departments, and that recommendation is to accept the proposal from Lab One LLC. They are doing business as Quest Diagnostics Incorporated. At the rates listed, the contract period is for three years with two one-year options to renew. Item number two is the 2025 recommended insurance renewals for risk management. Recommendation is to accept the insurance premium renewals as listed, and this is for an estimated total of $3,010,950. Item number three is the Emergency Fire Dispatch Protocol System for Emergency Communications. Recommendation on this item is to accept the quote from Priority Dispatch Corporation in the amount of $465,817, and that's for a contract term of five years. Item number four, CaseWorthy Provider Management System for Department of Aging and Disabilities. This recommendation is to accept the quote from CaseWorthy Incorporated. It's in the amount of $278,757.15, and it's for a contract period of three years that begins August 1st, 2025, and will conclude July 31st of 2028. Item number five is CaseWorthy Client Management System for Department of Aging and Disabilities. This recommendation is to accept the quote also from CaseWorthy, and it's in the amount of $397,215 for a contract period of three years. This one will begin September 1st of 2025 and will conclude August 31st of 2028. And our final item is Augmentum Tax Software System Upgrade, various departments, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from Manitron Incorporated. They're doing business as Augmentum Technologies, and it's in the amount of $3,524,466, and it's for a contract period of 21 months or until project completion. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have, and I recommend approval.
Okay, Joe, thank you. Lots on this one, six items today. Any questions or comments from the commission? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations of the Board of Bids and Contracts from June 5th, 2025.
Second.
A motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Okay, Joe, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Okay, Tom.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager.
Seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items D through R.
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item.
Budget Discussion.
We have nothing on budget discussion today?
Nothing from staff.
Tom Glidt?
Nothing from staff.
Nothing from staff, okay. Commissioners, anything you would like to add? Nothing from staff, anything you'd like to add on budget discussion at this time? Creeping towards recommended budget, so... Okay, next item.
Federal Grants Discussion.
Nothing from staff on federal grants discussion. Okay, this feels a little weird. Next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Do we have any committee reports, Commissioners, that you'd like to report to the public? Okay, seeing none. Next item.
Other.
Anything under other? Okay, I'll have you know that I'm on a record-setting pace here, Tom. Okay, nothing under other. Next item, please.
Executive Session.
We do have an executive session today. I'll ask Commissioner Howe to read the motion.
All right. And Chairman, I'll probably use 9:45 as our end point. Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners recesses into executive session for 30 minutes until 9:45 a.m. for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship regarding a proposed agreement, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 9:45.
Okay, I'll second that motion. I want to make one note real quick before we call the roll. We do have a fire agenda item, so you want to do that when we get... It's one item, and I don't see anyone from the Fire Department here. I was waiting for someone to walk in, so is everyone okay with just hitting that when we come back from executive session?
Or if you like, I could withdraw my motion. We can take care of that.
Why don't we do that now? It's one item. I was waiting for someone to walk in from Fire.
It's no big deal.
And I don't think they anticipated that we were moving as quickly as we would, so why don't you withdraw the motion?
Withdraw my motion.
Okay. Motion withdrawn on executive session. We'll pause for a second and convene the governing body of Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, officially call the meeting to order for June 11th, 2025. First item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Present.
Commissioner Wise.
Present.
Commissioner Howe.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Beatty.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
No one has signed up for public agenda for the Fire District. Next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of May 7th, 2025.
Okay, Commissioners, anybody have any questions on or comments on the Fire Meeting Minutes? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Meeting Minutes of May 7th, 2025.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Okay, Tom.
Good morning again, Tom Stoles of County Manager's Office, recommending approval of consent item B on the fire agenda.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to approve the consent agenda item B.
Second.
Motion a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bluebaugh.
Aye.
Commissioner Wise.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Beatty.
Aye. Next item, please.
Other.
Anything under other? Seeing none, next item.
Executive Session.
We have no executive session for the Fire District, so we'll officially adjourn the meeting for governing body of Fire District Number One. Return us back to the meeting of the Sedgwick County Board of County Commissioners. We're on executive session. Is that correct, Count Clerk?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on executive session. Commissioner Howe, would you like to make that motion?
Should we stick with 9:45 still? I think we can do it. Okay, so I move that the Board of County Commissioners recesses into executive session for 30 minutes until 9:45 a.m. for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship regarding a proposed agreement. That the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 9:45.
Okay, that's a motion. I'll second that motion.
Well, hey, welcome back right at 9:45 as promised. There was no binding action taken in an executive session. Is there any other business that needs to come before the commission? I will publicly announce it as 9:45. This might be a record, might not be, I don't know. We'll have to go back through the archives and look. So if it wasn't for the executive session, we'd be there.
Yes, Pete's on here.
Yes, Pete's on here. We're done for the day. Everybody have a wonderful Wednesday. See you in two weeks.